Portage County Board of Supervisors meeting, recorded October 15, 2024.
It's five o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting of the Portage County Board to order. If you would do the roll call.
Sure. We have nineteen supervisors present. We have Supervisor Dodge, Supervisor Eggleston, and Supervisor Matt Chakowski remote, Supervisor Medine, Supervisor Rockman, and Supervisor Schwartz are excused.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one for discussion only, discussion of the 2025 proposed Portage County budget. A copy of this can be found on the Portage County website. I believe Director Josie, she's remote this evening, but Director Josie, would you like to share a calendar of what's coming up in terms of budget meetings from this point?
Sure. Lee, can I share?
Yes.
So you should see on your screen the section of the county budget document that has the kind of the timeline for the budget posted. So October, that's kind of where we're at. That's you are here in terms of the budget process. We've presented the county budget. That's what happened at our last meeting. The budget itself was published on Monday for a legal notification. Currently this evening, you have the opportunity to ask any questions about the budget or the budget presentation, and those will be answered. The next step would be for Finance Committee to review the resolution to adopt the budget and the levy, to forward that on to the County Board. That meeting is scheduled for October 28. Prior to that meeting, if there is a committee or a supervisor that would like to propose any budget amendment, they could submit that amendment for the Finance Committee to entertain. You could do that. It needs to be submitted to the Finance Department by the 21st in order to make it on the agenda for the 28th. If there are any amendments that are proposed, Finance Committee will review those and will either recommend the amendment or not. Any amendment that is submitted will get forwarded to the full board as well. And then in November is where we will have the public hearing on November 4. And then after the public hearing, the budget would get adopted through normal resolution. The resolution would be placed on the floor. From there, the board can amend the budget if there are any amendments that were submitted or not, or they can just choose to adopt the budget as is. And that's, it would be by simple majority. In order to adopt the budget, it's a simple majority. Amendments, once the budget is adopted, are two-thirds vote, but the original budget that gets adopted in November is just a simple majority. And that's kind of the process from here. So the next, tonight, of course, ask questions, and then any amendments are due to the Finance Department on the 21st. The 28th is a Finance Committee to entertain the budget resolution and any amendments that were submitted. And then November 4 is the public hearing and budget adoption meeting. So if there's any questions.
Thank you, Director Josie. Before we go to any questions, I would take a motion to get this on the floor to discuss. Motion by Splinter. Second by Ware. Any questions or discussion? Supervisor Jukowski.
Not a question, Mr. Chair, but Jenny, I hope you feel better.
Thank you. I didn't want to share.
Thank you, Jenny. Public notice, members of the public who wish to address the County Board on specific agenda items must register their request at this time. With such comments subject to the public common ordinance and the reasonable control of the County Board Chair as set forth in Robert's Rules of Order. Number two, approval of the October 7, 2024 minutes. Move by Lattick.
Is there anybody who wants to speak?
Hold up, Brett.
Seconded by Morrow. Scott, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm speaking on item number three, the rewriting of the Portage County Planning and Zoning Ordinance subdivision ordinance. I'm here as the Town of Linwood Town Chair. The Town of Linwood is in favor of the rewrite, but the town is not in favor of having it done outside. We are in favor of having a committee put together of people from the towns, not the city or villages, as the ordinance doesn't affect the people from the city and the village as it does the people from the town. And we want to be involved in that rewrite. So again, Portage, or Town of Linwood is in favor of rewriting, but not in favor of spending up to $250,000 or $300,000 to have an outside firm do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a motion and a second on the board to approve the minutes. Any discussion, any corrections or additions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Resolution ordinances. Number three, to undertake a comprehensive revision process to the Portage County zoning ordinance and to rewrite the Portage County subdivision code with the intention of repealing and replacing the existing subdivision ordinance. Take a motion. Motion by Marisi. Second by Ware. Discussion. Steve, Supervisor Sislovich.
I voted no for this at the committee level. I am all in favor of this, as this is long overdue. The reason I voted no is because I don't think we have enough information going forward on this. There was other counties recently that revised their comp plan. They did it in-house. Not saying we can't do it in-house, or we should do it in-house, but I like to have the facts in front of me. What I mean by that is, I want to know how much it's going to cost us in a timeframe for us to do it in-house. Do we hire an LTE? Do we not? We don't even know if it's going to cost 250,000 or 300,000. It's just a guesstimate. I need to know more better numbers, solid numbers, what's it going to cost, how long the process is going to take before I vote yes on this. I'd like to take a motion and send it back to committee.
Second, Mr. Chair. Supervisor Marisi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to hear from staff on this as well, but this process is just to get the RFP out and to move us forward to find out exactly how much this is going to cost and how, you know, which angle we are going to take. But if Director Reed, if you don't mind kind of explaining that further, that'd be really helpful. Thank you.
So agreed, Supervisor Marisi. The resolution will allow you to put out the RFP, and then we'll know exactly what we're talking about in terms of the dollars for that particular option. I've also had conversation with Director Schultz in procurement. We can use a cost benefit analysis tool there, and then whether it's hiring staff, as you're suggesting, is a possible option, or the RFP. You're comparing apples to apples, and then you'll know which option you want to pursue. At this point, you don't know what that RFP option is going to be, as you had stated. And then the other thing, too, is there are checks and balances in this. Before, we'd actually go forward with a contract that would come back to this board to make that decision. So you do have that as an option as well, but we'll proceed however you want to proceed.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Supervisor Lattick.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This kind of blows my mind that we want to spend this kind of money potentially to rewrite this. It's amazing, amazing how we can function if we're that far off. We've got other counties that are nearby that we can look at their plans, and if we see something that we don't have that they have, we can simply do an adjustment here, an amendment, without spending 200, 250, 300,000. I'm just really foggy on this. You know, I think we can do this on our own. We can't be that far off. I mean, we're functioning every day here to spend this kind of money when we can't. We could use that for other projects. I honestly don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor and a second to send this back to committee. Do you want to withdraw your motion, Steve, or do you want to let it stand?
I'd like to let it stand.
Okay. Further discussion on, we have to, I believe we have to move through Steve's motion at this point.
Yeah, the motion and the second before the board is to refer it back to committee, so discussion and vote on that first.
Supervisor Marisi.
I think just bringing up all the facts to light about this is another important thing. Staff, Director Reed, if you wouldn't mind explaining why we are that far off in response to Supervisor Lattick. I believe the last time there was a comprehensive rewrite of the planning and zoning ordinance was in 1966. So that might be why we're pretty far off, and it's been kind of patchwork quilted together for the past, you know, 50 years. If my math's right, 60 years.
Director Reed. So yeah, that was the adoption of the code. I mean, over that period of time, and there are many tools that have been developed that we, you would have the option of implementing, giving staff in terms of administering and enforcing the zoning code. I guess I would, I would say that if, if it goes back to committee, you know, speaking in terms of on the amendment, you don't have that information in what the RFP, what we could get back from that, and the proposals that we can get back from that. Remember, it's not just a cost for the project, it's how they would go about doing the project. And we would be, in the interviews, we would be working with the consultant to say, here's what we're looking for. So I know that the comment was, is who's going to be writing the particular zoning code? I mean, we do this like we've, we've done many other projects in terms of having an advisory group made up of town officials, also reaching out in special meetings to the professional communities like surveyors and the like to get that input for what tools should be involved in the new proposal before it comes back to you. So I guess from my perspective, from staff's perspective, I would encourage you to have that information and then make the decision from there. You know, if it's, if it comes back too much in terms of that proposal, or the proposal's not right, then we can tweak it from there. But if we send it back to committee now, we won't have that as an option.
Supervisor Matt Chakowski online. Okay, Matt, seems to be gone. Any other discussion? Supervisor Splinter.
I agree with the motion to send it back. There's a lot of questions here across the board, I think, and I really would like to see the committee work with the town, town people. As Scott mentioned, Scott, Mr. Swake said, they're interested in being part of the process. And let's, let's take a minute out and see what we can come up with in conjunction with the, with the people of the Town of Linwood and our internal people before we say whether it's possible to do this in-house or not. Maybe, maybe we come back, we say, well, it's just too big of a job for in-house, and then they can come back to us and say, well, we need to put an RFP out. But putting an RFP out right away, I think, is a little premature, so I'm going to vote for the motion to send it back to the committee.
Supervisor Ware.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts of things, information that I got from when I was sitting in the committee meeting. Number one, some of the neighboring counties that have been able to do this type of work at a much lower price point, that the reason why is because they aren't starting from scratch from rewriting the 50-year ordinance. So I think comparing ourselves to neighboring counties might not be an apples-to-apples situation. I think it's going to be more of an apples-to-oranges situation. And then another thought regarding some of the conversation that happened on the committee level is we've already talked about staff limitations and capacity with staff, and that potentially we may be able to do this in-house, but it would be at a cost of things that we wouldn't be able to continue to do within the, within the county. And then my last thought is, by sending it back to the committee at this point without having the information through the RFP, RFP process, I don't, I'm confused on what we'll be able to do on the county level, because we won't have the information needed, and that's what we would be getting from the RFP process. The RFP process doesn't commit us to spending 250,000. It just gives us actual figures to begin to work through the process of making the decisions of what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shabalski.
I just had a couple things. The first was just being a minor point of order. Did we have an original motion to get this on the floor? And isn't that a, the first motion that has to be dealt with before we can go to a second motion to send it back?
No.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
No, there was a motion, a second to have it on the board, and then the superseding motion, and second to refer it back to the committee. So that's the motion before the body that needs to be addressed first.
Okay. My second point is, I'm just, just reading it, it's, the actual resolution just says to start the process. There's no, nothing in the resolution about doing the, going outside of house or anything else. Like, I mean, I don't, personally, I don't see a problem with starting this process and letting, letting that all shake out. So I guess I, I would be in favor of just letting, letting this go forward.
Supervisor Olkey.
Thank you. So again, the RFP, if I understand correctly, would really bring forth to the committee information or criteria that is being, that the work that would be done. And so that's done on the front end. In terms of the, the RFP would include the work that's requested to be done and with a price tag attached to it. Or we, and that's what information the committee could build from, determining or adding to it, or subtracting from it, or deciding if staff can do it. But the, an RFP really gives some type of platform from which you're really looking and, and making your decisions on versus, versus little information to really develop a solid plan, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I would favor going out on RFP as well, and just seeing who responds to it and what they can bring to the table.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to send it back to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Vote, vote, please.
Yep.
Just a sec. It's going to take a minute.
Got to settle up.
Mr. Chair, if you would please clear the question, please.
So what's in front of us at the moment is a motion to send this resolution back to the committee.
Who's the third supervisor gone? Rock. Sorry, just one more. Okay. We're good to go. You can vote.
Everyone can vote?
What the heck?
Supervisor Eggleston?
Nay.
Supervisor Dodge? Supervisor Dodge? Supervisor Dodge, can you unmute yourself?
Yes.
And Supervisor Matt Chakowski?
Yes.
Motion fails?
Back to the main motion.
All right. So we need to go back to the original motion. To undertake a comprehensive revision process to the Portage County zoning ordinance and to rewrite the Portage County subdivision code with the intention of repealing and replacing the existing subdivision ordinance.
We already have the first and the second.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
He won.
Yeah, I think we should vote.
I need to know those things.
Yeah, we're going to do it online again. Good to go?
Yep.
All right, you can vote.
You need to call for discussion on the original motion.
That's true.
We did, but you can have further discussion.
I'll back up a minute here. Any discussion on the original motion? Supervisor Marisi.
I just, I just want to clarify that this is just an information gathering motion. Like, we are literally getting, we are literally doing the due diligence to get all the facts that we need to about this particular topic, how much it's going to cost, if, if we should keep it in-house, who should be involved. The committee's already clarified that the towns will be involved. The only thing that we don't know is how much a professional service would be to do this comprehensive rewrite. And we also don't know if it's more beneficial to hire an additional staff person to actually do this rewrite, because there's no possible way that we can do this rewrite with the staff that we have and still provide the services that we currently provide to the, to the community. So all this is right now is literally doing our homework. We're only, only trying to get our homework out there, get some numbers so we can bring it back to the board. So then we can have a fulsome discussion about if we want to spend X amount of dollars on this project as a comprehensive rewrite, if we want to hire a staff person to do this. Regardless of what we come up with that outcome, all towns will be involved and invited and part of the process, because their voices are the voices that matter the most throughout this entire thing, because it impacts them the most. Thank you.
Supervisor Jukowski has his hand up.
Supervisor Matt Chakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I read through this, it looks like some things have been decided already. I'm on page, is there a page number? Yeah, it's page eight of nine on this. It says, "The following is a tentative outline of comprehensive revision process. It has a scope, a facilitation and drafting. It has the makeup of the advisory committee and the cost." Those are things that are policy decisions, and I've never saw this come across, the Planning and Zoning Committee, to make those decisions. So I'm wondering where those decisions were made and why they're included with this ordinance.
Supervisor Reed, would you like to respond?
So in preparing the documents for the Planning and Zoning Committee to review and to put the resolution forward, we did have to have a framework of what, you know, in our professional opinion, what the process would look like. Now, that's still, when you let an RFP, that is up to those entities responding to that RFP to respond. And it's like any other RFP that the county has done. A group then sits down and scores that according to the documents that were prepared and what their proposal is, so that we can get the most bang for the buck, the best process going forward, so that we can have the best zoning code and, you know, public participation process in this, in this whole document as we go forward in adopting the zoning code.
Thank you, Director. Further discussion? Supervisor Lattick.
Thank you. I still think that with the towns that are involved here, we can talk to our own neighbors. I don't think we need anybody from a consulting firm to talk to the people at our next door. And we do have, if we pass this tonight, I can see that it still goes into our, our capital plan, which there's tax levy involved. And we still have, it looks like, what they guessed, from 150 to 250, but we still have $50,000 for our, our support, support wages, overages, unpaid budget costs, unanticipated budget costs, it says. I still think we can look at other counties, take their plan, see what, go with Marathon County, cut and paste. I think we're making this a bigger deal than what it really should be. I, I still don't see this as moving forward.
Thank you.
I, I agree with moving it forward to revise it, but I think we can do it on our own.
Thank you. Supervisor Gifford.
Yeah, hi. I just wanted to express, I guess, confidence in the committee's decision on this. And I say that because I'm reading all these documents. To take a zoning ordinance that had been written six, almost six decades ago, and as the resolution indicates, has been, you know, changed and updated a number of times, many, many times, would indicate that, you know, maybe we do need a little, you know, professional advice as far as how to bring this up to, you know, current day standards, I guess you would say. I mean, in six decades, the economy in Wisconsin has morphed and changed, you know, in countless ways. And so I think to bring this county into kind of modern status as far as zoning, I think, you know, to find a professional person that can advise us on this is not a bad idea. So that's.
I mean, certainly very important subject matter, technical subject matter when it comes to the shoreline zone, obviously farmland preservation and that, that whole plan. Now, that zo- that zoning for the farmland preservation was never, or wasn't adopted by the county board. This is a, you know, a 12 to 18-month process. It's, it's going to take, if we're going to do it in-house, well, and, and as, as the director, I, I don't think we can do it with the staff that we have. It's, it's either, we're either gonna have to hire staff or we're, we're gonna have to go out and, and get that professional staff that does this every day, that has worked with other communities, so we can bring in new ideas and update that code. That's what the whole idea is. So, how does it, how does it differ? It's, it's different subject matter, it's more of a variety of, of subject matters in the zoning code. It's more, it's the general zoning code. It's not the specificity of some of these other codes that you had mentioned.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Reed, Jim, just a quick question. We have 72 counties in Wisconsin. Have we, have some of the staff just done some preliminary research? And I, and I'm just thinking away, Supervisor Lattick is saying, are we doing something, something totally unique to our county? Or are there other, there's gotta be other counties that have a similar coding? And again, I don't see why we can't research other counties and find a, a similar ordinance and cut and paste. Why, I mean, I sure as heck don't wanna spend 50 to 100,000 dollars on something that, that we could easily, you know, talk to another county and have them share with us.
Well, I, I would disagree. And, I mean, to, to answer your question, it's kind of a yes and no. I mean, could you cut and paste? Yeah, I don't know why you would wanna do that. I think that's a disservice to your towns and to your residents. You don't want a canned code. You want something specific that's going to work for Portage County. We spent quite a bit of time going over the comprehensive plan here recently. We did that prior to this process, so that we were set up for this process. So the, the comprehensive plan, as you know, is a general plan for the county, a general direction. You're gonna be doing some strategic planning to add to that here coming up. Where the rubber meets the road is the general zoning code. And I would encourage you not to take that lightly, not to do a canned code and not to cut and paste. It's not that we're going to be completely different when it comes to the general zoning code, the enabling legislation from the state is, is, you know, we have to comply with, Portage County has to comply with that, just like many of the other counties do. But this, this needs to be an important process with public participation, reaching out to the towns, reaching out to the professional communities, and it, it's, it's not a cut and paste. And I would encourage you not to think of it that way, respectfully.
Thank you.
Supervisor Barry Chakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Director Reed, you keep referring to the professionals. What specific other type of training would those professionals have than our professionals? I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what would they have, what difference would the professionals from our professionals?
So while I've worked in planning and zoning for almost my entire career, I've worked in a couple of counties, but I haven't worked in many of the counties that, or, let me, let me say, I haven't worked for a private firm that writes these codes for many of the municipalities, many of the, of the counties that do this every day, where they can be specific on that subject matter. I think what, what, what you're asking, or what some of the supervisors are, are asking is, is along with the everyday things that we're doing and administering the codes that we have, some, you know, a dozen codes, we also have to come up and, and try to write something that is, that is updated, that updates, you know, the 60-year-old code that we keep talking about. So what, what do they have? They would have more staff that could focus in on, and have that expertise to focus in on the general zoning code and all the things that are involved in it. Things like the housing challenges and the other tools that we're looking for to have available to us here. Signage ordinances, all of those things that, they're just the nuances that could be updated. And I don't know what all of the other communities, what the new tools that they have or new ways that they're going about things. I'd like to see what other communities are, are using to have an analysis of that and, and bring that forward, should those particular tools be adopted by the committee and the county board. You know, so if you take that, you know, those are just a couple of examples, but if you take that now and, and go over all of the subject matter, I think you're gonna lengthen this process substantially if you're looking at it to be done in-house. So, so again, is it, I mean, is it, that it can't be done? I guess, no. But how long do you wanna be doing this?
So staff is capable of doing this?
The current staff load that we have in the department, if, if you're going to say, do it with the current staff load, I'm going to ask you, what should we not be doing?
Again, staff could do this though? They're capable?
I, I'd have to designate one or two staff members on this project completely.
Again, the question is, staff is capable of doing it or not?
Yes, staff is capable of doing it. You have a very professional staff, they could do it, yes.
Thank you. Supervisor Marisi?
I would ask Supervisor Chakowski, what services is he prepared to cut if we do this in-house without additional staff? That's the question you should be asking. Because of course our staff is capable. We hire the best. We have the best staff here. They can do the work. The fact is, is it's outside of the scope of their job to rewrite a 60-year-old planning and zoning code from scratch. So what are you prepared to cut, Supervisor Chakowski? Can you answer that, please?
May I ask what firm originally wrote the original zoning code?
Yeah, questions do need to be directed to the chair, and I'll be honest, I cannot answer that question. Director Reed does not know either. Supervisor Ware?
I just wanna make a statement. I just wanna make a statement regarding the financials. If we were to decide to hire, so if we decide to do this in-house with the staff that we have, we would need to hire at least an additional person, potentially more than one person. That person would need to have the right skill set that we're looking for to be able to do the, the work that we're asking. That's, this is a short-term project, so we would be looking to hire somebody that has this incredible skill set, potentially one, two, I'm not sure how many people with the skill set. And I think that the concern is, is we may be spending money that we could be saving by staying in-house. My concern is, if we take the in-house approach, we might end up spending a lot more money because, number one, we're gonna have to hire a minimum of one person, I'm not sure how many people we'll need to hire. And number two, are we gonna get the person that has the best skill set for a short-term position in central Wisconsin?
Supervisor Honnell?
Thank you. I'd like to just state that currently the board is, is dealing with a number of building issues that have been sort of kicked down the road for 10, 20 years? Because we couldn't make a decision about what to do, or what to build, or when to do it? And it seems that we've embarked on a, a refreshing planning process in our county that looks ahead to the changing demographics, to the changing climate, to the, the changing business climate. And that failure to really do good, sound, professional planning is not going to speak well of this board, and I don't believe it's gonna serve our county well 20 years from now. So I am in favor of supporting what the committee has recommended. Thank you.
Supervisor Olkey, then Supervisor Chakowski.
And I would just add, and this piggybacks a bit on Supervisor Ware, in terms of the KSAs or skills, knowledge and abilities.
Could you talk to the mic?
Excuse me. Yes, I'm just speaking to the, the knowledge, skills and abilities that Supervisor Ware mentioned. There could be that person in-house, and, you know, there might be someone there that's just excited to do this project. Unlikely, because these are skill sets that are not, that aren't built into your portfolio. They're learned skill sets and they're developed in the capacity that they're intended to serve. So it's, it's a bit like, oftentimes, we are, we think of ourselves as teachers, but it's actual teachers who are credentialed that really produce the best outcomes.
Thank you. Supervisor Chakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to Supervisor Honnell's discussion on us not having correct planning when it came to making decisions on buildings, I believe we have several hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of studies that tell us that we should have built a new jail and that we should build a new courthouse. And those studies, again, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars worth, are sitting on a shelf someplace collecting dust. So we, we did do the diligent planning, and that same planning is sitting collecting dust. Thank you.
Any additional discussion on the original motion?
Supervisor Chakowski?
Supervisor Matt Chakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's been stated over and over again, that this is an old plan, it's 60 years old. It's not an old, and it's not 60 years old, it's been revised 16 times since then. We don't have to start from scratch. I look at the Board of Adjustments, I follow the Board of Adjustment packets. There's one, maybe two things a month. There's a lot of months that the Board of Adjustment doesn't even, doesn't even meet. That means that our zoning, the way it's written now, is doing pretty well. Yes, it could use some tweaks, but it's doing pretty well. I think we have a bunch of smart people here that are leaders of our townships. We have a bunch of smart people in the room that you sit there, get them together and change some code. We don't have to do a total rewrite. That doesn't have to be done. That's wasting $300,000 when we've been told over and over, the budget's tight. We denied three sheriff's positions, we denied positions at HHS, we denied a change in management salaries at the highway department that we are going to have to find a way to fund. And here, we're gonna spend $300,000 to do something that isn't totally necessary.
Supervisor Lattick, then Supervisor Sislevich?
Thank you, one, one last time. I, I agree with, we don't, we don't really need to reinvent the whole wheel here. And I don't know how many pages our zoning code is, and we're talking about the general zoning code, so it doesn't sound like it's specific. But if we took two pages a week and updated it and ran it through the next board meeting, it could be eas- I would think it would be doable. Thank you.
Supervisor Sislevich?
We all get paid a non-fiduciary fee to sit on this county board to make the best decisions for the county. We have to think about what's the best use of our county's money. And again, the whole reason we're having this conversation is because I asked the question, and it was never brought up to me, what it's gonna take for us to do it in-house? It was, I get the whole RFP process, I really do, I understand it. But again, we're just, it's like we went down this road of the RFP, and that's what we need to do. Okay, I need to see, can we do it in-house for 100,000 or roughly around there, not to exceed this? And, or if we get an RFP, and if my constituents go, what's going on, or my town supervisors go, why'd you pass that? Because the RFP process says this company can do it twice as fast, and it's gonna be a lot cleaner than we can do it. Okay, I got facts, I can make a decision. That's what I need to do.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Endazzo?
The idea that we can just willy-nilly write code is somewhat insane. I don't know if people understand the complexity of code, how so much of government, or government, the way the city runs and what we can do here is built on code. We've hired a professional that we put a lot of faith in to take care of this for us, and he's told us over and over, very clearly and as politely as he can, that he wants us to go outside, and we can't even support him in it. And we're not even voting to do that, we're voting, voting to find the information, which we could balance against what we do in-house, but they've told us they don't wanna do it in-house. Let's listen to our staff that we hired, who are professionals, and move on.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Supervisor Dubek?
So we're voting to put an RFP out there tonight? That's, is that correct? Will this RFP?
That's the current motion.
Come to the, a committee level to approve the bid? And will we, as a county board, eventually approve that bid?
You'll have the contract?
Yeah, I believe the contract comes back to the county board.
Okay.
Again, this is, this is a motion to begin the process, it does not lock us in. And I'll echo Director Reed's comment, we don't have the staff capacity in planning and zoning to do this. So the options are to hire outside expertise or put on two or three employees. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. I'll restate the motion. To undertake a comprehensive revision process to the Portage County zoning ordinance and to rewrite the Portage County subdivision code with the intent of repealing and replacing the existing subdivision ordinance.
You should be ready to vote?
Are we good to go? All right, you can vote.
Supervisor Eggleston?
Yes.
Supervisor Dodge?
Yes.
Supervisor Matt Chakowski?
No.
Supervisor Honnell and Gifford, we are waiting on your votes.
Press it a couple times.
Motion carries.
Item number four, Town of New Hope Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zonin- Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. I'm not even gonna try and pronounce that name. I'll take a motion. Motion by Marisi, seconded by Olkey. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Number six, Resolution Authorizing and Enacting Revisions to the Code of Ordinances, Section 7.8, Portage County Non-Metallic Mining Reclamation Ordinance. Take a motion to get it on the floor. Motion by Lattick, seconded by Olkey. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Number six, Resolution Authorizing and Enacting Revisions to Code of Ordinances, Section 2.21, Street Name and Building Numbering. I believe we need...
No.
Supervisor Honnell and Gifford, we are waiting on your votes.
Oh, press it a couple times.
Motion carries.
Item number four, Town of New Hope Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Amendment. I'm not even going to try and pronounce that name. I'll take a motion. Motion by Marisi, seconded by Olkey. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And all abstained. Number five, Portage County Zoning Ordinance Map Hawley. Take a motion? Motion by Rakowski, seconded by Olkey. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number six, Resolution Authorizing and Enacting Revisions to the Code of Ordinances, Section 7.8, Portage County Non-Metalllic Mining Reclamation Ordinance. Take a motion to get it on the floor. Motion by Lattick, seconded by Olkey. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, Resolution Authorizing and Enacting Revisions to Code of Ordinances, Section 2.21, Street Name and Building Numbering. I believe we need Supervisor Marisi, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
My apologies. I'll take a motion and get it on the floor. Motion by Marisi, seconded by Olkey. Supervisor Marisi.
Thank you. We have a small technical amendment. The, I think the wrong ordinance was put into the packet. We had made an amendment to Section 2 dot 2.1 dot 8 penalty. In the meeting, I believe Supervisor Rakowski made the motion to change the word 10 to 30, just expanding the time period for people to have their, their address numbers posted at their, their driveway essentially. So we just need to make that small technical amendment from 10 days to 30 days.
Wait, I, I would do it by a motion in a second. You're going to make the motion and, on the board floor.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to change in, to change the word 10 to 30 in Section 2.21.8 Penalty in the ordinance.
Motion by Marisi, seconded by Rakowski. Discussion. All those in favor? Supervisor Sislevich.
I did reach out to a couple of town supervisors. There are some concerns of part-time help and not getting it done in 30 days. Sometimes it takes 30 days to get the numbering, whatever it may be. And is there going to be a fine? That's, that was a question brought to me from one of the town supervisors, because sometimes it takes 45 to 60 days to get, to get the job done. So, and to put a fine down a township is, they weren't in favor of that, so just bringing it up.
Any other discussion regarding the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Uh-uh.
Amendment passes. Now back to the original motion. Resolution Authorizing and Enacting Revisions to Code of Ordinances, Section 2.21, Street Name and Building Numbering.
As amended.
Take a motion and put this back on the floor. Hope. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, Approving a Memorandum of Agreement between the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, Natural Resources Conservation Service, NRCF, and Portage County Land and Water Conservation Division. Take a motion to get it on the floor. Motion by Dubek, seconded by Marisi. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those, all those opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, Revision of Portage County Code of Ordinance, Section 3.11.9, County Human Resources Policy Fringe Benefits, parentheses, two, health insurance. Take a motion to get this on the floor. Motion by Olkey, seconded by Stan. Supervisor Shabelski.
Thanks. I was just wondering if somebody could explain to me in real terms what the difference between somebody's paycheck is going to be, going from 80, from 88% county coverage to 80, or from 95 to 90? Just what it's actually going to mean to somebody's paycheck? And how much is it going to save the county?
I'm not sure we have anybody here. Laura, would you like to speak to this?
What I can do is give you the monthly premiums for the employee, if that helps. So right now, for the high deductible health plan, a family plan for 2024, the employee portion per month, per month is $85.23. This with the 20% premium increase we did, would be putting it to $204.55 per month. And for single, 38.29 to 91.88. For the PPO, currently for family plan is 220.01. This would be going to 440.02. And for single, it's 98.87 and be going to 197.74.
So that sounds to me like it's basically tripling and doubling.
The PPO plan is doubling, yes, and the high deductible is more than doubling, yes.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, apologies. Supervisor Matt Jokowski.
I realize I may have already, but I, when this was brought to the healthcare committee, I asked the same question as Supervisor Shabelski. And one of the things that you don't see in the packet, and I, I guess maybe it's my fault, I apologize for that, is the issue of our, our healthcare contributions. 2018, we have stayed the same or gone down with our amount of premiums that our employees are, had to pay. I realize this doubling and tripling is a hard pill to swallow. If you go back to the human resource meeting video and watch it, it was a hard decision for all of us to make. We talked it through, and the savings they've had over the last six to seven years, and even a premium holiday in there, I think, kind of weighs this one-time increase. The other thing that was brought up at the committee level that the package doesn't reflect what the committee meeting would, is we talked about that we're going to watch this healthcare account as we move forward, and if we're doing well, we said we need to give that back to the employees as, as soon as we can. So if we get halfway through the year and, and see that we're doing really well and can watch that and monitor that, we hope to maybe do something for the employees towards the end of the year, next year. That all depends on how healthy our employees stay and how this healthcare market plays out. It's, it's kind of happening all over. We're not the only ones in this situation.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? I'm going to ask you all to restate your vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Next meeting date, we're looking at November 4th, 2024. Having, ah, I would call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Randazzo, seconded by Lattick. We stand adjourned.